We will now call to order the June-July 13, 2021 meeting of the Town Council. Chris, will you lead us in Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now begin with item C, Presentations and Recognizations. Nancy Power.
Well, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to praise two of the most dynamic and enthusiastic high school students that I've ever had the privilege to work with. Every few years, our Youth Services nominates a student for the Youth Excellence Award as a way to honor someone who positively impacts the services of our department. This past year, we had two such individuals that not only excelled in impacting their community, their contributions set a legacy for our programming in the future. I am not sure when the State Youth Excellence Awards will return, but I didn't want this year to end, excuse me, without honoring Isabella Bella Saffredini and Mercy Atticola. At our August Human Relations Commission meeting, we will honor these two young ladies. However, I am pleased to be included in this meeting to make this announcement in front of the public and the Town Council before they leave for college. Both recipients are on opposite ends of the country tonight, although I think one of them may be listening in. Let me tell you a little bit about each of them. Bella organized and created an international intergenerational club. This club, entitled Generations, provides monthly events between elderly community members and high school students. Over the last few years, they have hosted a variety of events from concerts to game nights and crafting together. One of the most remarkable qualities that Bella exhibits is her contagious enthusiasm. She encourages all club members to not only interact but connect with the seniors. Her leadership has generated many bonds and relationships that are life-changing. Mercy has been our moderator for our Racial Equality Task Force's monthly community conversations. We have addressed topics such as implicit bias, microaggressions, health disparities, and Black in suburbia. Mercy's gentle demeanor and conversation style puts our speakers at ease as they unpack and discuss these difficult topics. Her maturity and ability to connect and talk off the cuff is unmatchable. It is a joy to watch her develop her questions, manage the speakers, and connect with the audience. She has set the bar high for our future conversations. Both of these talented, capable young women are moving on to college in the fall. We wish them well, and on behalf of our community, we are thankful for their contributions. We will formally present them each with a special gift in August at our Human Relations Commission meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And to Mercy and Bella, if you're watching, thank you for all you've done for the community and all the help you've given. That truly is high praise, hearing those words coming from Nancy. So, thank you and congratulations and good luck in college next year.
Thank you to both of you.
We'll now move on to item D1. Paula.
A public hearing will be held on July 13, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers to amend Farmington Town Code 111 Historic Areas for the purpose of adding two properties to the Lovely Main Historic District and one historic property under the jurisdiction of the Unionville Historic District and Properties Commission. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the Office of the Town Clerk, Town Hall, 1 Monteith Drive, Farmington, Connecticut, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 29th day of June 2021. Kathleen A. Blonsky, Town Manager.
We have Shannon, who will be giving us our presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I am Shannon Rutherford, the Assistant Town Planner for Farmington. I'm happy to be before you this evening after a year-long study and process to add three homes to our Unionville Historic District. Anna, may I have the next slide, please? Before you is the map showing the additions to the district. So, in yellow, we have the home at 111 Lovely Street. In blue is 132 Lovely Street. And in green, in the box at the top, is 796 Plainville Avenue. Next slide, please. And you can continue to the next one, please. So, I know the council has received the reports already, so I'll give a brief overview of the three homes, and then obviously, if there's questions, I'm happy to answer those. But the first home that's being added in is located at 132 Lovely Street. It is currently owned by Jack Kemper and Todd Fontanella, and this has historically been known as the Albert J. Brewer House. It is a 19th-century vernacular with Greek Revival details and built circa 1868. And this is one of the two homes that's proposed addition to the Lovely Main Historic District. Next slide, please. Our next home is located at 111 Lovely Street, and this home is currently owned by Barbara Karski. And this has historically been known as the Eugene B. Ripley House. It's an Italianate style, built in 1875 or 1876. This is the second home that's proposed as an addition to the Lovely Main Historic District within the Unionville. Next slide, please. And our third home is located at 796 Plainville Avenue. This home is currently owned by Joan and John Berry. This home has historically been known as the Asa Holly House. It is a Georgian style with 19th and 20th-century vernacular additions, built circa 1800. And this is a proposed standalone historic property because it's not immediately contiguous to any of the other districts in the Unionville Historic District. So, those are the three properties that have been added. Thank you, Anna. So, this last slide, simply a thank you to the homeowners that are adding their homes into the district. A thank you to Bob Hoffman for doing the photos for us, and also a thank you to Lisa Johnson for doing the reports, our town historian. Next slide, thank you. So, the other item that needs to be discussed this evening is the actual change to the ordinance to formally add these homes to the district. So, the ordinance, the changes are highlighted in yellow. So, the Lovely Main Historic District, it's a legal description that is showing in details the boundary of all the homes that are located within the Lovely Main Historic District. I believe there's four now with these two additions. So, these are the edits highlighted in yellow that were added. And if you can scroll down, I wasn't going to, I can read it into the record, but I don't believe it's necessary if we scroll down. The next is the listing that actually shows 796 Plainville Avenue being added in as a separate historic property, and that's itemized in the ordinance as shown on the screen. And then, the rest of the ordinance doesn't change until we get to the bottom. And so, we can scroll down through, and at the bottom, the ordinance discusses the boundaries. And so, there's a note noting the boundary, and when it's approved, we'll put a final, the final date would be July, assuming the council chooses to approve this this evening, and the map will be filed on the land records. And so, those dates would be finalized with a July 2021 date. Next slide, please. So, the council understands the process, the review process that has led up to this evening. The report is completed. Again, our town historian, Lisa Johnson, does all the research on the properties, prepares the reports. They then are transmitted to the Historic Preservation Council, the State Historic Preservation Council, for their review, and we've received their approval December 1, 2020. It also is transmitted to our Town Planning and Zoning Commission for their review and endorsement. We've received their endorsement September 28, 2020. The next step is for the Unionville Historic District and Properties Committee to hold a public hearing. At that time, all the property owners that are looking to join and add their homes into the district are invited to that meeting, as well as it's open to any public member, any member of the public. And that meeting was held on January 7, 2021, for that committee to formally approve the report and map, which they did that evening. Subsequent to that meeting, one of the homeowners at 142 Lovely Street opted to remove their property from the expansion at this point, which we have done so, and which is why it's not before you this evening. The next step, after the hearing, edits to the report, final edits to the report and map are made, and then the report, map, and ordinance are transmitted to the Town Clerk's Office, which we did in early May. And there is balloting required for the homes that are added to the historic district. So, the two homes, 111 and 132 Lovely Street, that are in addition to the historic district, receive ballots. Paula Ray takes the lead with that. She submits, sends out the ballots and counts them when they are returned. My understanding is all the ballots were returned with an acceptance into the district. The home at 796 Plainville Avenue, because it's a standalone property, does not have to participate in the balloting. So, once they have their public hearing with the Unionville Historic District, that pretty much solidifies their acceptance into the district. And then, we come to this evening. We are at July 13, 2020, and the Town Council holding a properly noted public hearing, and it's now for the council to either accept the study report and enact the local ordinance to expand the Lovely Main Historic District and add the historic property located at 796 Plainville Avenue. They can reject the study committee report for stated reasons or return the report to the study committee to consider amendments and revisions. Should the Town Council choose to accept the study committee report and enact the local ordinance, our municipal clerk will record and index the expanded historic districts and historic property on the Farmington Land Records. And obviously, Paula and I would work on that together. So, that concludes the presentation for the addition to the Unionville Historic District. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. We will now go to the public to see if there's any public comment.
Certainly.
I do not believe we have any in-person comment. Is there any in line?
No hands raised.
No hands raised. I'll give everyone one more opportunity. If you have any questions on this item only, please raise your hand. Seeing none. Kathy?
No.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
Questions, all sat.
Okay, I think we're great.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shannon. Item D2.
Okay. A public hearing will be held on July 13, 2021, at 7:05 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers to amend the Farmington Town Code, Chapter 111 Historic Areas, for the purpose of adding three historic properties under the jurisdiction of the Farmington Historic District Commission. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the Office of the Town Clerk, Town Hall, 1 Monteith Drive, Farmington, Connecticut, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 29th day of June 2021. Kathleen A. Blonsky, Town Manager.
Thank you, Paula. Shannon, back to you.
I'm back up again. So, again, Shannon Rutherford, the Assistant Town Planner, and happy to present to you this evening the proposed property additions to our Farmington Historic District. Anna, if I could have the next slide, please, thank you. So, like Unionville, we have three properties that are being added this evening. We're excited to let you know that we have the property in yellow is 33 Waterville Road. And then, in the inset in the corner, there's a property in red, and that is located at 50 West District Road. And then, there's a very small property in the very lower right corner, and it's in green, and it's at 93 Copper Mine Road. If I could have the next slide, please. All right. Our first home that we'll discuss this evening is the home located at 50 West District Road in Farmington, and this home is currently owned by Mark and Janice Reimer. This home has historically been known as the Noah Day Hart House or Whittlesey Homestead. This home was originally built in the early 1700s, and additional details were added throughout the 18th century. Next slide, please. This next building may look familiar to those that travel along Red Oak Hill or Copper Mine. This is located at 93 Copper Mine Road. It is currently owned by the Farmington Historical Society, and it is the Old Stone School House slash the Chapel. It's 18th-century vernacular style and is built in 1790. And has quite the history for those, I don't know if you've read the report, I'm sure you found that an enjoyable trip through history. Next slide, please. The third home to be added to the Farmington Historic District is located at 33 Waterville Road. This home is currently owned by Angela Munson. This home is known as Meadow View and is a colonial revival built in 1903. And that's the final home that's being added to this district. And again, the final page of that, the report presentation, is a thank you to the homeowners that are entering their homes and properties into the historic district. Photo credits to Janice Reimer and Lisa Johnson, and of course, a thank you to Lisa Johnson for pulling the reports together for us. And we can go to the next slide. So, we're back to the ordinance, the second part of this. It's the acceptance of the report, but then also the enactment of the changes to the ordinance. The Farmington Historic District ordinance differs slightly in how the properties are entered in. They are entered in by reference as Exhibit A and B to the ordinance. So, that's what's highlighted on the screen is where that reference is made, and there's a footnote at the bottom of that first page. And then, there's a reference again, I think it's at the end. Anna, if we scroll through, I don't think there's any highlights. The rest of the ordinance does not change with respect to rules and orders of procedure. The only change then, again, is on the last page where there's a reference to the boundaries and the map that'll be updated. It'll be the map that was shown to you already this evening. We removed the color. The color's used for presentation purposes only. And then, the exhibits that are attached get updated, and those should be the next pages, Anna, if you wouldn't mind scrolling down. So, this is Exhibit A, which would get attached to the ordinance and recorded in the land records, and it highlights the three properties at the bottom that will be added. It says 2020, I need to correct that. It'll be added in 2021, and those will get added in. And then, the last page, if you scroll down one more for me, is the map, again, that we already discussed, and that map will be finalized and recorded in the land records as well. And then, the, one more page for me, Anna, and that'll be the last one. This is the timeline, and again, this starts with Lisa having created the report, and then these reports are transmitted to the State Historic Preservation Office and their council, reviewed and approved the report on December 1 of 2020. This also was transmitted to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission. It received a positive endorsement in July 20 of 2020. And the Farmington Historic Study Committee held a public hearing on these properties, and that public hearing was held on February 16, 2021. And at that time, the study committee formally approved the report and the map. And again, all the homeowners that were adding their properties to the district were invited to that public hearing, did attend and participate, as well as any member of the public. So, they had an opportunity to ask questions and better understand this process. The report, map, and ordinance were then finalized and transmitted to the Town Clerk's Office in early May. There are no, all of these properties, excuse me, all of these properties are standalone historic properties and not, I'm not immediately contiguous to the boundaries of the Farmington Historic District. So, again, balloting was not required, and this then allowed these properties to just be added to the district. Again, this is now here before you for on July 13, 2021, with a properly noticed meeting, and the Town Council has the option to accept the report and enact the local ordinance, to reject the study committee report or return it to the study committee to consider amendments and revisions. Should the council choose to accept the report and enact the ordinance, then the municipal clerk will record and index the historic properties in the land records. And that concludes this presentation.
Thank you. We will now, again, go to public comment. If there's anyone joining us here who would like to add public comment, seeing none, we will next go online. Okay, and this is for this item only. So, any questions we have just for the historic district of Farmington? So, any questions or comments from the public? Okay, go ahead. Russ Arnold, can you hear us?
Okay. I don't think his hand was up, Anna.
Never mind.
Okay.
Any questions from anyone else? Anna, do you see any other hands raised? Okay, no more hands raised. Any questions from the council?
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. We will now go onto item E, new items, of which we have none. We now go to general public comment, where the public may speak on any items this evening. Please state your name and your address, and try and limit comments to five minutes if possible. Anna, do we have any public comment now?
Yes.
Jay, if you can hear us.
Okay, so, I've had difficulty with this in the past. Can you hear me?
Jay, we can hear you.
Your loss. No, I'm just kidding. Okay, J. Toulon, 39 Timberline Road, Timberline Drive. I am here before you to speak briefly about something I've spoken to before, and that's the rise in antisemitism in the world. That could be a very long conversation, but I know CJ is going to stop me if I go too long. So, I promise I won't. First of all, I am very appreciative. I think at one of the recent meetings, you did announce that you had signed on to the Mayor's United Against Antisemitism. I think I might have missed that. I'm very appreciative of that, and I guess I'll take a little bit of credit to bringing it to the town's attention, and I'm very appreciative of the fact that you did sign on, and that's a great start. However, I do believe that there's much more work to be done. I've participated in a number of webinars, Zoom meetings, et cetera, sponsored by a number of different groups. I was just recently online for a rally in Washington, DC, which unfortunately, I was in DC, unfortunately, I had to leave before that rally. It had a number of organizations that stand in solidarity with the Jewish people. I know this is something I've spoken to in the past. I don't have anything specific in mind, however, I know that the, there's a number of bipartisan task forces. I know the governor just created a hate crimes advocacy group, and the CEO of the ADL and someone from the Jewish Federation were both appointed to that group. And I do believe that their, part of their mission will be exploring the possibility of communities like Farmington possibly taking a stronger stance, and I don't have anything specific to offer at this time. I just kind of wanted to put it out there that I am mindful of that and hope that at some point in the future, the town of Farmington will continue to move beyond the Mayor's United Against Antisemitism, which is a great thing. I believe six or 700 mayors, council chairs, what have you, all signed on, which is great. And so, I just wanted to put in my two cents that there is work to be done. It's a tremendous upsurge, you know, like a lot of other hate crimes against a number of different people, and, you know, it's something I'm obviously very passionate about. So, I just wanted to come before you to kind of put in my two cents and let you know that there's a lot of, like I said before, there's still a lot of work to be done, and I'm hoping that the Farmington Town Council will be mindful of that in the future. That's all I have to say. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jay. Appreciate the comments. Anna, any other questions? No other hands up? If we have no other public comment, we will move to item G, reading of the minutes. Peter.
I make a motion to accept the June 8, 2021, regular Town Council meeting.
Second? We have a motion, a second. Any comments, additions, subtractions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Next?
I make a motion to accept the June 22, 2021, regular Town Council meeting minutes.
Second?
We have a motion, a second. Any comments on the June 22 meeting minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Item H.
Just written correspondence.
Reading of correspondence on written appeals.
You just have the one piece of correspondence in your packet.
Very good. Okay, any questions there? Moving on to item I, Report of Committees. Number one, land acquisition.
Nothing new to report.
Green Efforts Committee.
Nothing new to report. Our last meeting, we were unable to hold it due to a number of scheduling conflicts, so we're scheduling another meeting.
Okay. Farmington High School Task Force Building.
Task Force. We're now a task force. On the Building Committee, we just met, having come off pause in the referendum passing, and we're sort of, the best way to describe it, we're at the final plan development stage, and I just thought I'd, you know, walk through some of the high points of sort of the next steps in the process is where we're going. So, at our meeting, we issued a notice to proceed to the architect to complete the final plans, and from this point, as we work down sort of the schedule of events and tasks that we have in front of us, we'll be working with the state, State of Connecticut, CGR Office to review plans throughout the process. We will be working with our professional partner Subcommittee to select a firm for a construction manager services, after issuing an RFP and conducting interviews. We're going to establish a design working group, select independent engineering firms and commissioning agents with RFPs and interviews, and that'll be doing reviews of MEP issues with the plans. We'll submit the final plans to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission for site plan approval, submit those plans to the Board of Education for approval, and then put the project to bid and award the construction contract. So, that's kind of where we're going, and it's going to be moving fast forward from this point, you know, forward. So, on behalf of the Building Committee, thank everybody. We're very excited where we're going.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Racial Equality Task Force.
Nothing new to report.
Okay. Item J, moving on to Report of the Council Chair and Liaisons. The first would be the Town Council Report. I'd just like to mention, the Farmington and Unionville communities have done a tremendous job of returning us to some sense of normalcy. We've been gathering safely with friends and family, patronizing our restaurants and bars, and enjoying the abundant outdoor recreation we have throughout our community. This past weekend, we saw the return of the Tunkses Hodes Parade Carnival and fireworks on two evenings. Seeing families enjoying the entertainment was really a welcome return. The Senior Center had an ice cream social on Monday. Wednesday, tomorrow, Bicycle Friendly Farmington will have their weekly social ride, which starts at the Unionville Parking for the Trail at 6:30 PM. Thursday evening, Farmington Rec Department will continue their concert series on the F-Hill right next to the library. Also, the Stanley Whitman House has a Music in the Garden series, also Thursday night. Friday, we've got Cinema Under the Stars, which will continue at the Polo Grounds. Friday, we've got Cinema Under the Stars, which will continue at the Polo Grounds. And the TPZ just approved Pomona Pete's to have live music Saturday nights. All of these can be found on Explore Farmington, so I do encourage you to get out and take a look. They update the list every week. I mention this as a reminder. It's gathering together that makes our town a community. We have so much to offer, I just hope everyone can go out, enjoy the summer, and embrace what we have. With that, we'll go to item two, Board of Education Liaison.
Okay, thank you, CJ. Just, the Board of Education has gone into recess for the summer, but just summarizing their last, the meeting on June 14th, there was a general recognition of the administration and board's COVID partners, including the faculty and staff, medical director, nurses, nursing supervisor, Farmington Valley Health District administrators, including Matt Ross, Chartwells, and M&amp;J Bussing, and everybody that worked together to get through this very challenging last year. The board voted to continue the extension of health and safety protocols through the 2021, 2022 school year, as recommended by the Department of Education. The budget is closing out the year, applying for, also applying for grants now and allocating the ESER funds, but they're still working hard on their budgeting. The Farmington High School logo for the Riverhawks was adopted, but it's now going to enter into a revision and refinement stage with final, then after submission to shipment, go to final legal and Board of Education approval. And the board voted to approve the FPS EU, the FPS Employers United Non-Certified Educational Personnel Contract with a 2.0% increase over three years with, 2.0 with step over the next three years. Other than that, permit?
Easy for you.
Yeah. Other than that, the district is getting ready for next year. Summer school and enrichment programming are in person and going very well, and the board and administration is still waiting guidance on, and requirements from the Department of Public Health about mitigation strategies that would require next school year.
That's it. Great, thank you. Economic Development Commission Liaison. That's Ed, who is not with us at the moment this evening. He will be returning at our next regularly scheduled meeting. Farmington Historic District Commission, Brian.
Nothing to report, other than next Tuesday, the 20th, will be our meeting at 4:00 PM.
Great, thank you. Housing Authority.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Human Relations Commission.
Yes, thank you. HRC met on June 28th. They discussed the needs assessment and drafted four goals. They discussed creating a process for the commission to vet potentially relevant recognitions from the town, and we're in the process of finalizing the voter registration event at New Horizons in September. And they'll be resuming informational presentations starting on August 23rd.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Library Board.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Town Plan and Zoning Liaison.
Nothing new to report, because you took my Pomona Pete's.
Sorry about that. It's a good vote, positive vote last night. Unionville Historic District is also Ed, so we'll table that till next time, and I believe Unionville Village Improvement Association as well. So we'll move on to WPCA.
Nothing new to report.
Anyone have comments on other liaison positions? No, we will now move on to the report of the Town Manager.
You have the written report in front of you. I just wanted to highlight a couple of items. Today was the first day of, the true first day of the Connecticut Water Project on Route 4. So as you know, that there is a significant detour, that the road is closed. Tomorrow, it will start in the AM, so we expect this week to be a little rough with the traffic, where people are getting used to the detour, and hopefully, starting next week, where everyone has gotten used to it. But obviously, there will be some inconveniences, but we have, the Connecticut Water Company has to do the water project. We have updated our question and answer on the webpage. We've been trying to do some press releases. There'll be some media tomorrow morning on the radio. But again, this is a Connecticut Water Company job on a state road. Our job is really just to help facilitate and get, communicate the information out. Fire Station Building Committee, I just wanted to talk a little bit with the council, is that, as you know, this is one of our goals, to start working on a fire station building committee. I thought maybe in September, we could have the fire company and Steve Hoffman come and maybe give some background and some of the things that go along with that. I thought it would be a good time to kind of kick, start kicking this forward a little bit, and there's, as you can see in the report, there's a lot of work that's already been done, but I think that it would help the council get up to speed if they came and kind of just talked about the project and what their thoughts are and what some of the reports were. So I thought that was something in September that we could have. The other item is that Farmington should be considering, I think, a wildlife feeding ordinance. The police and the animal control have seen an increasing level of calls concerning bears. So this is not new. There are some other towns that have ordinances. So this was something that I thought at the next meeting, that we could begin the process of updating our ordinance with that. Our animal control officer is recommending that we do start, that we do create a wildlife feeding ordinance. So I wanted to, in September, start that, and we'll, you know, we're not going to recreate the wheel. A lot of, like Simsbury and East Granby, they all have these types of ordinances. So that. And then I had a couple other items I just wanted to mention is, one is that the scouts have reached out to my office to coordinate a ceremony outside of Town Hall for the 20th anniversary of 9/11, the morning of Saturday, September 11th. So we're going to be working with them. It'll be a Saturday morning. They would like to have a large event, and the council, they've asked the council to participate in it. So I just wanted to give a heads up with that, because we're not meeting in August, but you'll be, we'll notify you, obviously, before the event. So they did reach out to us on that. The other item is that we did receive half, our first half of our federal funds, and it's a considerable amount of money. It's $3,000, $3,772,926. What Joe Swetki and I had discussed, and I wanted to, I think it would be a good idea, we're still trying to really figure out what you're allowed to spend the money on, but I thought maybe in September, we could have an action item to set up an ad hoc committee with a couple of town council members, myself and Joe, and we could go through what some of the thoughts are, sort of like what we did with the Parsons property, and have kind of the council meet with Joe and I, and have an ad hoc committee, and look to see what we're able to spend the money on, what are some of the thoughts, what are some of our ideas, and go from there. This would be the first half of the money, and then it's my understanding that we'd receive a second, second half, which is another $3,772,000 a year from now. So we are receiving close to $7 million in federal funds. So that's something that I thought in September that we should look at and get an ad hoc committee together. And hopefully, by September, Joe and I will have a better idea of exactly what you are allowed to spend the money on, so that we could come up with some recommendations and then have input from this ad hoc committee. There is still definitely a lot of confusion about what you can spend the money on, so I want to get some clarity on that. And you don't have to spend the money until 2024, so we still have some time. So that's good news, but, so those, that item. And then lastly, we have Russ Arnold, our Director of Public Works and our Town Engineer on the line, and I'm going to turn it over to him, and he's going to give an update on the Main Street sidewalk project.
Great. Russ?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now, Russ.
All right, great. So with the side, with respect to the sidewalk, we've been back and forth with the State of Connecticut DOT, trying to get approval to go to bid. There's been a lot of back and forth between District 4, Thomason, and the DCD, and the community connectivity with the DOT, another portion of the DOT. Kat has been working with me a lot, she's been a great help, as far as we've got a meeting scheduled tomorrow to kind of finalize, hopefully, the last round of comments, and get a final blessing, so we can get a permit from our District 4 Thomason DOT, in order so we, for us to go to bid. That way, what we put out to bid, the contractor will know exactly what they've got to do, what's required from the DOT, because it's working within the state right away. It's been a long process with them, trying to get them all on the same page, and Kat was good, and scheduled a meeting for tomorrow morning, and it would be, hopefully after that, that we can get approval to go to bid, which would be sometime, I would say, in September. And by then, hopefully, prices will start coming back down for materials, to get us a better bang for our buck, to get farther, more sidewalk for our money. And that's pretty much where we're at right now.
Russ, so can you just kind of give in your mind, if the, if it goes well tomorrow with the state, what would be the timeline of, you know, the bid, and then actually the construction?
Sure. Hopefully, we get everything narrowed down tomorrow, we get approval within the next week or so. I would suggest that we not advertise until September, because most contractors at this point are busy working. And put the bid out in September, with coming to the council for award in October, possibly getting some work done, you know, at the end of October, November, and then we start again sometime in the late spring. We don't want with the, with Ms. Porter's and no Wallace, I don't want to have a lot of sidewalk opened up for a lot of crossing of Route 10 as students and kids get back and forth to school. So we're trying to get the majority of the work done in the summer, as school is out of session, and with less disruption to them. So that would be next year, next summer.
Okay. Do you have anything out there to your report in general?
No.
Okay, does anyone have any, while we've got Russ on the line, does anyone have any questions for Russ?
Just one. Was the delay more so from the state side? What inhibited us from losing so much time? Was it COVID-related personnel on the state side that we lost all this time?
We've been back and forth, Peter, with the plans to the state. It's been, we've been waiting for comments. It takes a while to work with them, for whatever reason, and it's been sitting with them since, oh, I think in the spring. It's been back and forth a handful of times, and it's been difficult, to say the least.
Okay. Was this any different than any other sidewalk project that we've submitted in the past that the process took much longer?
Yes. Our Unionville project was very smooth, and within a couple, three weeks, we were, we had approval and a permit.
And what are you talking about now?
Probably five, six years ago now, seven years ago.
Russ, I think, for Peter, I think it would be fair to say, there's a, there was a couple of things, I think, going on. One is that we have numerous grants, so we have numerous state agencies that we have to deal with, so that puts a little bit of extra time in. I think definitely, there's been some issues with COVID with, on the state level, but something that took three weeks the last time, we're talking months and months of going this time. So, you know, and we're hopeful, Russ, I think you've said, and Kat, you said that you are hopeful tomorrow, that you guys have come to pretty much a meeting of the minds, that you're hopeful that this is, this is going to be it, right?
Yeah, we're hopeful, because we'll have all parties at the table, and it's, you know, we have people saying, oh, I'm waiting to hear from them, and they're waiting to hear from you, and vice versa. So we got a meeting tomorrow that will have all entities, as you said, Kathy, with, from the grant and the funding, at the table, so we can get all this ironed out.
I got a question.
Okay, good luck.
Oh, sorry.
Brian.
Yeah, question, just hearing what we were just talking about, and I'm glad that we're getting some sidewalks, but were we dealing with grants last time in Unionville as well?
Yes.
We were. So really, that hasn't been the, it's not the grant issue, it could be the COVID issue, but it just seems like it's taken a really long time, and I know it's been frustrating to a lot of folks in the village who are looking forward, and other, and other folks as well, who are looking forward to the sidewalks. What were the things that they were waiting on us for? Because you said that there was some back and forth. What kinds of things did they need for us that we weren't able to give them?
We weren't, we gave them everything we needed to give them, and we, they would, we sent them, sent them comment, they sent us comments. I sent it back, I'd have to wait for comments to come back. I just got my second round of comments from the district. It's, we pretty much turned things around within two weeks.
Well, given the, given the fact that you've been dogged in pursuing this, I appreciate that. If we're looking for a silver lining, is it the fact that we're going to get a better bang for our buck if we wait a little while? Is that the silver lining here? Our dollar will go further, because I thought it was the other way around, that it would have been easier, it would have been less expensive this year to do the, to do construction. I could be wrong, since not as many.
Well, what's happened is, over the last, over the last six months or so, prices have gone up for materials. So, and they're starting to come back down. We're seeing a trend that things are coming back down in pricing. So I'm hopeful that by the time we get through, you know, our bidding process, that numbers are more in our favor. But you're right, a year ago, we wanted to be out to bid last fall, and we, just, it was going back and forth, and all the coordination between all the funding sources and getting everybody to, under the table to talk, has been very difficult.
And, and Russ?
It's not a fact that we haven't been sitting around doing anything, we've been pushing and pushing, it's just difficult to get three different parties and then to coordinate their efforts.
Right, and I just want to clarify, Brian, one thing is that what is different, yes, there is grants on both sides from the Unionville project before, but it was one funding source for the grant. Russ applied for various grants for this, and the one grant came from DCD, one grant came from DOT. So that's what the difference is too, is that before, we were dealing with one agency, and that's with the grant agency. This time, we're dealing with three different grant agencies, and so you're coordinating not just through the DOT, which is difficult in itself, you're dealing with them, but that agency has to coordinate with the DCD agency, which then has to deal with the other grant that we got, and so there's all these agencies that are doing it. And so bottom line is, is that Russ and Kat have been tracking them down, but they have comments, and usually a comment would come, and we'd send it back, and that would be the end of it. Now the comment comes back again, and then we have more comments, and then those comments have to go to another agency, and then they have to review it, and then they have to check with the other agency, and then the other agency has to check with the other grant. And so it's a round circle of trying to do something that should be relatively simple, and then plus you have COVID along, you know, alongside of it.
Sure, sure.
So, so, I mean, I think that Russ and Kat have spent a considerable amount of time just really trying to bang the drum, to try to get everything back as fast as they can, and then following up and following up to get the state to respond back to us again.
Well, I would say, thank you for getting the grants that you did get, both, both of you guys. Thank you for pursuing it and sticking to it, since it sounds like it's been very difficult. And I guess we can really thank the state for dragging their feet, so that we can get more bang for our buck at this point.
And that is absolutely, the glass is half full. Thank you, Brian. Appreciate that. No, that's good. You know, it's, you know, the silver lining, as you're talking about, the silver lining is, it's taken longer than previous processes, but we're getting a lot more linear feat of sidewalk than we would if there was only one grant. So for the entire town, and certainly for everyone on Main Street who's getting the new sidewalks, we're getting a lot more people to get sidewalks. So it's nice, I think Kathy mentioned, and Brian you did as well, in the world of COVID, things are always a little different, and it's nice to know you're going to finally all be sitting around the same table, so you can have that conversation. So instead of each individual question, taking five phone calls and potentially months to get answered, you have everyone at the table. So hopefully, tomorrow's the magic day, and we can start moving forward. So thank you all for your hard work. Is this a question? Yes.
Kathy, just came back to the wildlife feeding ordinance?
Yeah.
Wait, before, is there anything else? Is there anything else for Russ before? Okay, go.
Thank you, Russ.
Thanks, Russ.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you, Russ. Well, you know, from someone who's regularly visited by bears and does not have a bird feeder, I'd more than welcome anything that would mitigate the presence of them in my house, but, around my house, but I was just looking at this, and this is a point of discussion, and I don't know if you have any familiarity with these other municipal ordinances, but do you have any sense of what the enforcement mechanisms are for this, in terms of, you know, bird feeders may not be in plain sight, they're in someone's backyard, I mean, you know, what, do you have any sense of that? And this is a discussion point we can work on going forward, you know, obviously, I'm just thinking.
Right. I don't have a total detail on that, but that will be definitely something. I know that the animal control officer did give a presentation to the police chief and the staff, and I think that's what they're going to do, and come here and kind of explain how it all would work.
Yeah, okay, great. Thanks.
And that's, Chris, just on that, that's been a topic of the Farmington Valley communities all when we meet regularly, generally once a month, and it's been an ongoing issue. The biggest problem is individuals trying to feed the bears.
Yeah.
And throwing out to feed the bears. So that's really difficult, but we've.
So, that's really difficult, but we've, in talking to some of the other towns, just having something on paper, an ordinance, where you can go to a door and now say, there is an ordinance against this, hopefully that's enough. You would have thought common sense would have worked, but.
And there will be a finding mechanism, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Kathy on her report? Couple of just side notes, the scouts, I believe what they're talking about is a flag retiring ceremony also, which would be coming to the Town Hall, and in a retiring ceremony, anyone has an old or battered flag, can bring it, so it will be disposed of properly. And the, the federal funds issue, that is, it is really key, finding out, we've heard all this, these dollars that are coming out of the government, but it really is, you know, as I said, the devil's in the details, what we can and cannot use them for, so we have to be very measured and make sure we cross all the Ts and dot all the Is, and make sure we're spending it on what is proper for Farmington, and what is proper according to the federal government. Anything else for Kathy's report? If not, do I have a move?
I will make a motion, Agenda Item K, to accept the report of the Town Manager.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Item L, appointments.
Agenda Item L2, I make a motion that June Lou be appointed to the Human Relations Commission for a two-year term beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2023.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just one question, who is she, and, and what, what are qualifications, and what does she bring to the Human Relations Commission?
Certainly. June Lou has been involved in our discussions with the AAPI community, Asian American and Pacific Islander, for those who are not familiar. We've been trying to have conversations to bring in more of the community in town government, town maintenance, management, and also to make sure, as we have done with the Racial Equality Task Force, if there's anything we as a town can be doing better to address any of the concerns of the community, that we will do so. So, that's how she's got involved. Her daughter, if you read any of the, I think it was in the, one of the national papers, was actually interviewed for one of the high school groups with the AAPI community. So, she's, she's been involved, and she's very interested in getting more involved. So, thank you for the question. Any other questions? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda Item L3, that Donna Mambrino be appointed to the Human Relations Commission for a two-year term beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2023.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and Donna's been on this commission, this is just re-upping her current appointment. Any comments, questions?
Yeah, just again, out of, out of sheer curiosity, same question.
Do we know how many years Donna's been on, I think for at least eight years, I'm not sure, so she's been on this commission for a very long time.
Oh, okay.
So, any other questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Okay, any other appointments?
No more.
Hearing none. Item N, old M, old business? None. Item N, new business?
Agenda Item N1, I make a motion to accept the study committee report and amend Farmington Town Code, Chapter 111, Historic Areas, for the purposes of adding two properties to the Lovely Maine, Lovely Maine Historic District, and one historic property under the jurisdiction of the Unionville Historic District and Properties Commission.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Kathy, do we want to add anything to that?
I think Shannon gave a very thorough report, and we're just going to be updating the ordinance.
Great, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. N2.
Agenda Item N2, I make a motion to accept the study committee report and amend the Farmington Town Code, Chapter 111, Historic Areas, for the purpose of adding three historic properties under the jurisdiction of the Farmington Historic District Commission.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Again, Shannon gave the report earlier. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda Item N3, I make a motion to cancel the August 10th, 2021, regular Town Council meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any detailed discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda Item N4, I make a motion to approve the following property tax refunds as listed below in front of you.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. We will next go to item O, which will be executive session, which will, we will be adjourning to. Before we do so, I will leave you with a quote from Cicero. "We were born to unite with our fellow man and to join in community with the human race." With that, we will go to executive session.
I make a motion to go to Agenda Item O1, executive session, to discuss matters concerning the sale or acquisition of property. Members in attendance will be the Town Council and Town Manager.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. We are going into executive session.